All right, so I'll call the meeting to order at 6:11 PM. For non-public session, we can call one of those at any time in accordance with Chapter 91A, 32, under A, B, C, D, E, or I. Hey, Allison.
Hi.
And with that, I think, did I hit the right points there, Chris?
You sure did.
Okay. So then that puts us at public input. So, any questions or items to talk to you from here?
Thank you.
Allison, yes.
Allison, I'm out.
Hi.
Thank you.
Is that two?
Yeah.
Okay, so I guess I'm going to go first here.
Could you do me a favor? Could you just state your name and your address for the cameras? So we have that for public comment. That'd be great. Thank you.
JD Bernardi, I'm the State Rep, Rocky Camp 36. I cover Plaistow, Newton, Southampton, Hampton Falls, and Kensington. So I'm here on my app of Al Brandon to address the sign controversy associated with October 9. Your sign out front indicated that we're celebrating Indigenous Peoples' Day. And I have a handout there for you folks. It's basically New Hampshire laws and the two proclamations. So October 9 was Columbus Day officially in the 1930s. The Roosevelt administration created Columbus Day on October 12, the day Columbus landed in the Bahamas for the first time. And Congress subsequently changed that date to the second Monday of the month of October. New Hampshire followed suit. So you have at the top of that handout, New Hampshire's official holidays. And I've highlighted in yellow the fact that Columbus Day is recognized as the second Monday of the month of October. The Biden administration this year and every year has issued two proclamations, one recognizing Columbus Day and the second recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day. The bottom line is the reason the school was closed is it's Columbus Day. The reason the state was closed, its offices were closed and federal offices no need all delivered, it's Columbus Day. So the question at hand is, why was that not recognized? And Al brought that issue to someone's attention here. I'm not sure who. The suggestion was that this may have been directed from the SAU. The SAU is not your boss. You are the SAU's boss. The SAUs were started to be available as administrative services and as both by organizations. But you as school boards are responsible for the policies of your school. So if SAU tells you to do something policy-like, put something up on your sign, that's not their daily work. It belongs to you folks. So the real question is, did you authorize that and just say, we're not going to recognize Columbus Day? Or, I mean, you have the opportunities, the policies say we recognize both. Some communities do that. But to just turn a blind eye to the real reason no one was in school that day is, I believe wrong, Al believes wrong. So I'd be interested to know how that went down. Were you notified? Were you involved in that policy at all? Or is this just something that, you know, went by the boards because it's not really all at a level being addressed?
Joe, can I just ask a question, a clarifying question?
Yeah, I'm done. So that's the question.
Okay.
Why did this happen? Why isn't it addressed?
So when you say, why did this happen? Is it just the signage out there that we're talking about? Or is it the day off from school?
No, the day off from school is because of state law.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's clear. It's the signage.
Just a point of clarification. The SAU 16 calendar does not indicate, there is no indication of the official calendar of SAU 16 of Columbus Day. It's not, it's not, it's not in the calendar.
So does it, but does it say anything?
It says Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Okay, okay. So there's sign, there's labeling there and there's labeling on this.
So the challenge for us is if the official calendar of the SAU 16s is saying that there is no Columbus Day, that it's Indigenous Peoples' Day. And then the local sign, which we had a wonderful conversation, I'll talk about that in a minute. It is, it's a bigger challenge here, but I wanted to clarify that because you may not have been aware that the SAU 16 official calendar doesn't show Columbus.
Which may be why the sign was created the way it was.
Yeah.
So, but again, the key point is, and you folks need to recognize this, many people see you on school boards don't. That superintendent works for you. You run this school, not the other way around. And so when you get policy that you don't like or accept, policy recommendations, it's up to you to say, no, we're not doing that. Policy in this school is set by us. Here's what we're doing.
Yeah, that makes sense and I appreciate that. For me, I'm just trying to understand and make sure I understand what, you know, what the, what the issue is at the root and making sure that I got the details straight. And I will say, I don't know, I believe it was one of you that passed this out?
I did, yes.
Yeah, this is helpful for me in understanding the difference between the two names. Because for me, over the past couple of years, you know, I hear Indigenous Peoples' Day and I thought that was a pure replacement of Columbus Day, but this helps point out the distinctions between the two and why. So it's all.
I can say that every year that I've been in the legislature, there has been a bill to change Columbus Day to Indigenous Peoples' Day. It has lost, it lost this year and it'll come up again in January, February, and I presume it will lose again. There are some states that have switched. There are some states that have adopted dual days, recognizing both. Some states have recognized a different day as Indigenous Peoples' Day because there's a UN resolution that names the day of August as that. So, but state law and federal law says that second Monday is Columbus Day.
Okay.
Now, what I also gave you in addition to the state laws is the two proclamations from the Biden administration on both names or activities for the day.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to address the board too, if you're, if you're, that's okay. Al, you know, I'm living to a school board in Kensington. I'm just going to read the statement because I'd like to read it into the record because I don't think a lot of people understand what Columbus Day really is and I want to share that. So, "On October 5, 2023, while driving by the Kensington School Marquee, I noticed a one side of the public pay for sign said Indigenous Peoples' Day, no school, October 9. The other side of the public pay for sign, teacher in service, no school, October 6. I asked myself, what happened to the federal holiday of Columbus Day? Columbus Day was established in 1892 by President Benjamin Harrison in celebration of the 400th anniversary of the Italian explorer's discovery of the New World, who never set foot in today's continental United States, and in the wake of the horrific lynching and mob violence perpetrated on the Italian immigrant community of New Orleans the year before. The Ku Klux Klan also used tactics to generate Christopher Columbus in suppressing the holiday. Columbus Day is to acknowledge Columbus's contribution to the age of discovery, as well as increasingly important contributions of Italian immigrants to the great American experience. It was the catalyst that initiated over 500 years of immigration to America by peoples from every corner of the earth, all whom were seeking a better life or families. The Dartmouth Review examining the historical Columbus came to the conclusion, it is a mistake to conflate Columbus with the atrocities of colonialism that succeeded his voyage. Columbus Day should neither be a moment of absolute praise or condemnation, but an opportunity to appreciate mutual discoveries between Europeans and Indians and learn from mistakes that were made and celebrate moments of coexistence. To satisfy my curiosity, I called and spoke with Kensington, I put superintendent, I just upgraded you.
No, thank you.
Fendi group, and we had a very thoughtful conversation. She explained SAU 16 official school calendar no longer mentions cancels Columbus Day. I informed her that Indigenous Peoples' Celebration on the calendar is based on a proclamation, not a federal holiday. I requested her consideration for the following option, to please put Columbus Day on at least one side of the two-sided signs, to be more inclusive and respectful of the federal holiday and in those celebrating their Italian heritage like me." She informed me that that was a fair question and would consider it. Later on, on the 5th, I received a phone call from Mr. Andrew, did I say?
Andruski, yes.
Andruski, excuse me, SAU 16 superintendent. He informed me that the change to cancel Columbus Day was done nearly two years ago by all school boards via the vote. On October 9, no sign, I noticed no sign change. And now for me, the law of unintended consequences. Canceling Columbus opens the door to cancel any selected federal holiday along with the vast historical learning experiences of our children, simply at the direction of our local school boards in SAU 16. Who and what is next? Independence Day, Martin Luther's King? School boards spotlighted on full display, unfortunately, the hypocrisy of SAU 16's diversity, equity, and inclusion theory and mantra camouflaged as an act of social justice. You would think with the continuing loss of downgrading of local educational rankings and the increasing tax burden on local citizens, there are more pressing issues to attack. Kensington School Board swore an oath to the US and the New Hampshire Constitution. They have no authority to change it or cancel recognition of a federal holiday. Indigenous Peoples' Day was never approved by the state legislature and an RSA otherwise. The school gets local tax as well as federal funding. This additionally binds your legal requirement to follow the law and not discriminate. You are accountable to citizens first, not SAU 16. Charles A. Griffin of Portsmouth is retired attorney who served on the Portsmouth School Board with the city council, quote, "July 2022, Seacoast Online." Those who have researched Columbus using unbiased historical documents and information do not bring a biased viewpoint to this important debate. Those who have some sort of political bias grounded in Christian bigotry have a different outcome than would like to force upon schools and communities. It is with great sadness, I am afraid, some of the politicians who hate or be behind the continued attempts to attack and defend Columbus and Christianity today. It appears unfortunately to be alive here in Kensington in SAU 16. Allison Roy, Joshua Gould, and Stephanie Smith, please, I'm requesting that the Kensington School Board convene and act on the following as soon as possible. One, confirm the Kensington Elementary School curriculum teaches and celebrates Columbus. And two, the Kensington School Board vote to restore Columbus Day, federal holiday, back to the official Kensington Public School as well as the SAU 16 calendar. Please advise me of your decision or intent to honor this request as soon as possible. Thank you.
So I think we're open for any questions, if you have any.
All right. If it's two years ago, it was before my time, I think, when we went through the school-wide vote on this. I don't know if there was any more discussion on that or, okay.
The way I see this impacting us is when we approve our school calendar for next year. Addressing it then, which is usually in June.
Usually April, May, usually April or May is when the school calendar gets approved because you wait for the cooperative calendar because of SST because they have to work with the other Sunday towns.
That's right.
And then they, they will approve a calendar and then these elementary boards will then approve calendars at their, at their local boards.
That's right, but the calendar we approve is for Kensington.
Correct, yep, it is correct, yep.
Do we know about Columbus being taught in class today? Like what the curriculum?
I'd want to be able to give a more thoughtful answer to that and talk to all of the teachers.
That's fair.
I couldn't tell you exactly right now what happened in every classroom this week, so.
Of course.
Be happy to come back with more information about that.
Those were the two key points that I heard, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to find out if it's in the curriculum or, I hope it's not taken out, but I mean, I don't know.
And then we also do play a role as joint board members of approving the SAU calendar as well.
Correct, that's correct.
So that is something that we as individuals could bring forward as a topic for conversation during that discussion, which I think is a similar timeframe.
Yep.
Yeah, appreciate you sharing this and talking it through. Very helpful to hear and understand the concern.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to raise it. It's important.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So public comment started at 6:12, so we've just got four more minutes so I can give you a timeframe. Anybody else shows up?
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, I jumped in late. So did you do?
I went through the, just to get up to public.
Okay, so no approval in a minute?
Yeah.
Okay. Molly, are you okay if we do the minutes approval and then we'll jump to you? Does that sound okay? I know the boys are eating pizza and all. So the minutes from the September 13 meeting, any changes, additions, subtractions?
I just had one under number six. I didn't know if you wanted Carter's last name or if you were intentionally trying to leave it blank or?
Oh, yep.
If you wanted it or you just wanted first name, I wasn't sure. We were trying to?
No, it would say it's on the, we can give his full name.
Dow is his last name, D-O-W.
Thank you.
I didn't have anything else, yeah. Motion to approve in a minute?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, business and financials. I don't know if it's on here somewhere. There it is.
That's right. Free to sign. We did include a current year financial. We did do this a few weeks ago, essentially we have to get a board track and we can advance and take some time to prepare it. So we still are building encumbrances. We do have some ups and downs in this financial from changes in student leaving, I think we talked about, pushed here. There's no summary page because this is the first time you're seeing it. The next time you will have a summary page, just to compare some from November to October, but this is the first month I did that.
Okay.
Does anyone have any specific questions?
Let's bring it live. I'm really very interested. I can't see pizza.
My house looks empty. Yeah, anyone's naked. Thanks, Molly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Molly.
Josh, you want to do the policy committee stuff?
Yeah, so that starts on page eight. The first one, DFAs covering investments. There's no changes to the policy. It's not a new policy, but on an annual basis, the school board is required to review the policy and make sure that it still makes sense, that's current. So we went through that together as a policy committee and are not recommending any changes.
Okay.
It does, if you actually scroll down a few pages to the policy itself, you'll see Brentwood in the heading. It's just, our policy is the exact same thing.
They're all identical.
Heather and others, so we should be in good shape. The next policy, EB Workplace Safety Program and Joint Loss Committee. This is a revision of an existing policy. And when you look at the red line, you'll see that it's broken out into those two sections that speak specifically to workplace safety and a joint loss committee component. The joint loss committee is something that is going to be implemented. And that's something that we'll probably have future report outs on or at least have some information to share from what comes from that committee.
Okay.
So it's really just kind of conforming to, you know, the updates made by the School Board Association and kind of breaking them out into those two components. So those are the two policies under consideration. There is a number being added on page 10 that are being withdrawn. And you may recall that last year, when we were going through all of the policies, you know, a number at a time, there were certain policies that we were being, or that were withdrawn along with those policy changes. Heather and team have gone back and double-checked any additional policy withdrawals and whether or not those should be considered. And that's essentially what you're seeing here. So that big slog of changes that we made, there's a few that I would say kind of slipped through the cracks that we can also withdraw, given the updates that were made and approved last year.
Okay.
And that's it. Next meeting is, is it the next Thursday or Thursday? I think it's next Thursday.
Okay.
It's expected that the light's going to be a little bit lighter.
Okay.
Each time around, but.
Okay. Okay. So we need a motion to approve the investments policy, is that, and the new rewrite of the?
I, I don't, I don't think, do we need a motion to approve that? You got to approve both the two policies and then you do a separate motion to approve the withdrawal of the five policies that are listed.
Okay.
Even though with DFA, it's just a review of the existing.
Yeah, they always want it in your minutes to know that you've taken action on it.
Okay.
Ah, okay, good to know.
All right, so can I make a blanket statement for the policies to withdraw or should I just kind of list them out?
You, yeah, you would just list that we'd like to withdraw and you can just list them out, EGA and so on and so forth for the five.
Okay, got it. All right, so I'll make a motion to approve policy DFA, policy EB, and then a motion, or and then the withdrawal of EGA, EGAB, GBA, GBAAR, and JBAA.
I can second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks, Molly.
Thanks, Molly. They did great.
Yeah, they all did great. Dom had a little incident.
Tell Dom it happened to me every week until last year, so. It's very common. Oh, poor buddy. It's not the only one. Safety and security, we meet next week, so no update there, next Thursday. I'll be there for that. Superintendent Evaluation Committee?
Um, yeah, we met on September 14th, just to finalize.
Yeah, that's right.
The Dr. Aspel's goals and there wasn't any feedback or issues from any of the boards, so there weren't any changes.
Okay.
So what you have from her is what they, what they will be. And we're going to be meeting monthly and just to check in with her periodically on how the goals are coming along. In the spring, she'll do a 360 evaluation with like peers and.
Oh, great.
Other superintendents from the district.
That's cool.
Yeah, whole big evaluation. But in the meantime, that's sort of, it's just, we're just going to check in kind of periodically with her. So that's that.
You're up next again, Kensington Schools.
So that, we meet next week, so I'm kind of getting off some things.
Okay, great. General Correspondence?
We already dealt with Mr. Brock.
Okay, great.
Yep.
Great. The Communication Committee, Community Engagement Committee?
Yeah, so almost up to speed on it. We are meeting on October 24th to go over a survey that was created and vetted by the committee to find out how the committee engages with the SAU and how they find out information and sort of how reliable they feel like it is. So it was, it was a long survey with a lot of, a lot of details. And then the next meeting is going to be about how to increase engagement with the survey to get good results from it. And I don't, since I wasn't at the last one, I don't, that's sort of all I know, but I will find out more the next one and then I'll be able to.
That's great.
In the November meeting. Yeah, it sounds like it's, I mean, it seemed like a very thorough survey, so that should hopefully get some good results.
Good, that's great. Community News Submission, I think is due Friday, so if we can, between you and I, Steph, get that from Jenny, the verbia she used last time, and then I will submit it. Because I have that now. Becky sent it to me and also I got on the list, so I'm on there now, which is good. We did Business and Financials, I think. Oh, did we want to talk about, Molly did her piece, but Para benefits?
So we've talked a couple of times about paras. They don't have a union here. They don't have benefits. And more and more para are unionizing and they're providing benefits, which makes it very difficult to keep people employed if that's one of the things that will keep them employed. So if the board wish, I would bring from Heather, you know, some details on what benefits could cost, would cost. You could have different scenarios of how much you'd want to pay, but it is a factor of why we're losing staff. You know, paras are the hardest group of individuals, the lowest paying. They fill out a number of roles, so losing them because they're going five minutes down the road because of health benefits.
Are you even going to tell us which districts offer benefits?
Sure, and the SAU Exeter does, the Co-op does, Stratum does, Brentwood does, Dewfield does. So right now it's just Kensington and East Kingston. So it's something for you that we've talked about and if this board has the wishes, we'd bring it because, but we'll start talking about budget in November and, you know, so you know what that would look like. But that is definitely a concern, I know.
It does, we've had several candidates. It's been the make or break piece of whether they accept the position. We've actually had two staff members leave in the last few years to go to other schools with benefits and.
So it feels like it's a real factor.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think there's, I think there's no reason why we wouldn't look at that financial.
Right.
Yeah.
I know we've looked at it in the past.
Then I will officially bring you something for the next meeting, up top with Allison, so she has it ahead of time to look at it and ask questions. Because our goal, if we are going to put something to offer to them, would be, it has to be in our budget.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Principals Report?
So the first thing that I wrote about under positive community culture, you all noticed the new tree outside in the hallway with all the handprints. It really brightens the hallway. It looks lovely. It's the first thing you see right when you walk in the front door now. And that was a project led by our new art teacher, Mrs. Sheffield, with Mrs. Esquelin. And they had gathered, they'd been working on sort of the tree and their handprints and stuff and art, and then they gathered at community time last week and really just engaged in a lot of trust conversations and, and how, how we build trust and how that's an important piece of our. And how, how we build trust and how that's an important piece of our school community, so. Um, so that was a great afternoon for the kids and that, that they had been working on, um, and then culminating last Friday. Um, under Meaningful Learning, I was just highlighting some um learning in our STEM lab with Mrs. McCarthy. The um fifth graders just wrapped up um a unit with solar cars, which was a, a lot of fun. It really incorporated a lot of different science standards, um, some of, some of the earth standards, but also engineering standards as well. Um, with the different trials that the kids had to run with the cars and collecting data and, um, but then also just talking about. Um, solar energy and impact and all of that, so it really did combine a lot of really nice um. Science standards and it was a ton of fun.
Cool.
For the kids. Um, yeah, much harder as the uh fall was coming and the sun was getting less. And like it was a real factor that they talked about recognizing like the sun. Um, was not as powerful in the beginning of October as it was at the beginning of September.
That's really cool.
Um, and then under Health and Wellness, um, I was just highlighting some more of the professional development that our teachers. Um, do at the beginning of this year, I mean, I, I know. There's one whole school board meeting where I bring you sort of what their professional learning is, but this is highlighting sort of things outside of. Um, the education and curriculum, so this is some of the professional development that they do that really focuses on student health. And well-being, um, so um, we've participated in um diabetes training. Um, we're required each year to do the universal precautions and bloodwork pathogens training. Um, uh, we also have um several members of our KES community. Um, in which we need to better understand seizure um protocols, so. Um, that's another training that we've um, that we're currently doing, um, and then um. In November, we will begin um our first aid and CPR AED training. With American Red Cross, um, which we do complete every two years. And I just wanted to highlight the importance of this as we recently had a staff member perform the Heimlich maneuver in the cafeteria. And um was able to successfully dislodge um some food from a student who was choking, so. It's just super important that we continue to do these kinds of trainings, even though they have nothing to do with curriculum. Um, we're here to care for children and all parts of what they need.
Yep.
So, um, so I just wanted to highlight some of those other non-academic things that we learn about. To, to help our kids.
Okay. Alright. Uh, any new business?
And I think I'm also supposed to do the um.
Special.
Special education data, it wasn't um specifically, but I think that's just under um Principals Report.
Correct.
Um, so I have a couple of things for you to look at, um, cause we wanted to talk a little bit more in depth about special education numbers. So, um. We have, the first two pages are um a broader. Um, chart um of comparison of the other SOU of elementary schools, so it. Shows you enrollment and then special education percentages at the other elementary schools. Um, so if you look at the Kensington, um, we're sitting at eighteen point three percent. That's about a half a percent off of what I um shared last week, only because mine included preschool data, so. Um, this is just K to five on this chart here. Um, and then the second page is um a bigger cooperative district picture of numbers. Um, at the high school and the middle school, so that's just kind of the bigger picture. And then the last page is specific just to Kensington and that um. That um just shows our primary case manager, secondary case manager. Um, pre-K case manager, which is the position I'm looking to shift somebody into. Um, and then in addition, our speech and language pathologists, occupational therapists and physical therapists and sort of the numbers of students that they are. Um, currently working with.
Becky, is, is I assume a case manager is a teacher or somebody that is directly assigned to the person with. Special needs, is that correct?
So the case manager um is the person um in charge of a student's IEP. And managing all of the supports and services on that IEP, so. Um, they're very individualized, so some students' IEP have um direct service. Um, from a special education teacher, some, and some also include services from the speech and language and from occupational therapy. So depending on the child and what their IEP is, there could be two or three service providers on an IEP. We do have several students in our building who's have teams of up to ten service providers, many of whom. Aren't in the building that we contract with, so depending on how extensive the IEPs are, that the case manager. Manages all of the service providers and their schedules and their goals and.
And it's all tying back to each student and their IEP.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So it's important to consider, if you look at like the primary case manager and the secondary case manager, it would. Look just from numbers that they don't have equitable caseloads.
Yeah.
When you look at the actual students and the extent of their IEPs and the extent to which they need to be managed. There's um the difference in, in that time, does that make sense?
Yep.
I also included a column in there that we have six students um in the referral process right now, which is unprecedented for us at this time. Um, I don't anticipate that every one of those referrals will end up with. Um, necessarily an identification and on a student with an IEP, I do anticipate that perhaps some of those. Might shift to a five oh four plan because that's a more appropriate way to support the child. Um, so I don't anticipate all of those um. Becoming special education students, but then again, I don't have a crystal ball, that's why we have the referral process and we do the testing.
What's the difference between an IEP and a five oh four?
Yep, great question, so a five oh four plan um is designed to address accommodations that can be made in the classroom. To help a student be more successful. Um, five oh four plans generally don't include direct service to the student, although on occasion they do. It, five oh four has sort of shifted back and forth, sometimes you can, sometimes you can't. Um, but generally, a five oh four is more about accommodations and what can we do in the environment to help support a child.
Okay.
On occasion, on occasion, there is.
Is it? I- is it like out of the norm that there's nobody on a five oh four plan and everybody's on an?
So five oh four plans is, is regular education, so special education case managers would not be involved in students on five oh fours. So our five oh four plan is managed um by our school counselor and that's a regu- regular education um initiative, yeah.
Okay.
And then the bottom, um, is just the range of disabilities that we have in the building. I think the other thing to mention, um, because we have such a great team that um works together to try to figure out how they. Meet kids' needs, um, so for example, there's um. A student on, on the secondary case manager's caseload, even though she is the case manager, the primary. Case manager is actually the one providing the direct service, um, just because of scheduling. Um, you know, just because um. Two students may be in fourth grade, it doesn't necessarily mean that they're both working on the same skill and it's not appropriate to pull them. Together because they're not working on the same thing and so we really have to look at schedules and even though Whitney may be the case manager. Lisa may be the one actually providing the direct instruction just because of schedules. And vice versa.
And during our meeting last month, I believe it was the occupational therapist position that we talked a little bit about, so some of this helps sustain.
That's the role that I'm looking to, um, right where I say pre-case. Case manager, we currently don't officially have someone in that role. Um, I, yes. I have, Heidi has started doing those things just because we don't have somebody in there, but. It's not officially part of her responsibilities until um we can shift the time in her contract, but she's doing it now.
So, uh, so it was like maybe making the eighty into a hundred and then they'll pick up that pre-case?
That's, that's, yeah, that was.
Okay.
Um, my contention, yeah.
Can the primary case manager not pick up that one kid?
Um, I would not um. See where that is feasible, um. At the moment and also anticipating that. It's likely we'll have adi- additional preschool referrals throughout the year. We generally have anywhere between two and nine preschool referrals in a school year.
Do mo- do more of the referrals come like in?
So they come generally about six months prior to their third birthday, so if they're in early interventions, they usually try. To give us a heads up, um, that they have someone in early intervention. Um, because we'd be required to um evaluate and have an IEP in place by the time the child turns three. So we really need to start that process when they're about two and a half. So it's really up to early intervention and our child find process to um. Find these kids that are out there that are becoming to us by the age of three. I guess I, the general sentiment and um. Is that we, you know, and if you look at individual schedules, um. There's a whole lot of wiggle room in any of our special education staff schedules and it's only October. So, um, there's, there, um, there's just concern about staffing. One of the things um that Chris and Renee and I have talked about was do, is doing a special education audit, um, which I. Absolutely a hundred percent wish we could have that done tomorrow, um, because I think it would be really helpful for us to have an outside person come. And look at our process, to look at um. The number of referrals, the results of referrals that land in um identifications versus not landing in identifications. You know, and just be able to provide us feedback with our process and that's something that we're welcoming as a team because, um. You know, if we, if we need to make changes or adjustments to our process, then, then that's something that, you know, um. That we can certainly look to do.
What's that process like, is it?
So we've been in contact with the outside organization, they'll come in, um, they specialize in your auxiliary, like your OTPT, speech and language. And then um, uh, Renee and Dr. Bennett and Ellen would work uh through the case manager based on. Caseload, number of hours, IEPs, that's written, so it's a twofold, one outside, one internal. Bring it together, look at it, and then we can have, uh, do we have enough hours, do we not? It's perfect timing if we need, you know, for budgeting to explain why we would need another position or with current staffing, should we be using it differently? So, uh, I would anticipate, Dr. Bennett has been reached out to them, hopefully to have by the end of October to get that outside agency to come in. Um, and then Dr. Bennett and Ellen Risco would, would be in, you know, hopefully first week in November.
Yeah.
So, that, that's our timeframe, so that you have, you have information again when we meet in November to have all of that in front of you.
Um, I mean, we've already started to try to make some shifts, I think, you know, as a, as a, as a little school, we always try to like. As much as we can, but uh, the reality is, um, you know, we've had to shift some of our consultation models. Um, away from individual consultations to more grade level consultations with teachers, um, again, is it ideal? No, cause we're a small school and we like to do everything on a personal level, but um, this is just the reality of how we have to shift. Um, you know, for our schedules.
And the audit will take a look at where diagnostically the team lands and that kind of.
Yep.
You know, and, and there may be room for us to make changes and that would, that would be great. Um, and, you know, we're welcome outside eyes looking at, at what's happening. In the meantime, we have what we have in front of us and.
Yeah. Yeah, this is helpful for budget, for sure.
Go.
My fear is that they're going to tell us we need to bring more people. So, we'll see.
Yeah. I'll have some things to consider for this budget season for sure. Okay. Thanks Becky, that's super helpful, it's really. I really like this process that we've created. It's really helpful. Um, anyone have any questions? Old business, uh, we need new board goals?
Do.
Anyone have any thoughts about that conversation that we started last time?
Uh, just like a vague memory, but wasn't there something about sort of like s- strengthening our connection with the school?
Mm-hmm.
It was like, do they like walk through tours and classroom visits and stuff like that?
Yeah.
I like, I like that sound of that.
I do too, I think it might be really nice to get.
Yeah.
I mean, we. I mean, I, I don't know if every town can say that all three board members are parents of current students, so we do have somewhat of that, I think we're. Lucky in that way, but to see it through maybe our school board lens instead of a parent lens might be really nice, so. Um.
Yeah, it makes a big difference when you're not coming in like laser.
And you're a kid, yeah. Whatever project they're putting forward, um, yeah, so Chris, do you have any experience with a goal in that area? It's like.
Say, say it out loud.
It was like the strengthening of the, the, the relationship between the school board members and the, and the school. And like the staff and um students. And we kind of saw, envisioned it as doing some, coming in for a tour. Maybe seeing, you know, a class or meeting with students or.
Like the relationship and the engagement.
Yeah.
Um, should think of other words that maybe describe what I feel like we're trying to get at.
Let me look one up.
Interaction.
Mm-hmm. I think, I thought we were engagement.
Yeah, I said connection, but that's like not quite right.
Yeah. Similar.
Yeah.
Yeah.
While you're looking at that update on our fifth grade pet project.
Oh, yeah.
For the schools and the pet grant.
Oh.
They will be receiving grant money.
Exciting for them. Is it gonna be furry? Do they know yet?
Believe, I believe they landed on hamster, didn't they? I think, no?
I don't know.
I thought, I thought that was the final. Or maybe they were waiting to see if they got the grant to make the final decision, I, I, I thought hamster was in the lead.
No bearded dragon.
So this is one that um was adopted in Stratum this year, it was focused on their student wellness. And they adopted to better understand the experience of the students, board members look for opportunities to volunteer or shadow at Stratum Memorial School, so it's a day. They wanna come in and follow a student, it'll be in a classroom, um, just to understand and observe, to be able to make more informed decisions.
I think that's what we're similarly thinking, yes, yeah. Yeah, we love that.
Okay. Yeah, that to yours?
I just, I guess the only bit of hesitation that I have is. As much as I'm on board with that and agree with it, I've been having a hard time even trying to make some of the meetings with. Um, you know, the, the others are as part of what I believe is the superintendent goal. you know, the, the others, or as part of what I believe is the superintendent goals, or just kind of, you know, meeting with others within the SAU unit, so I'm fully on board with it, but just having a hard time making connection outside of work hours.
Imagine doing it in real life, no?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is not to say that we can't have it as a goal, I just have a little bit of hesitation there, that's all.
Well, maybe, maybe take out the part about shadowing, cause that kind of makes it sound like it's like a full day, I don't know, if there's a way to make it.
Or even just to have one of us do it, or if, you know, to, we can cover, come bring it back to the board and talk about the experience, would that feel like?
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to be something that we.
All do.
Yeah.
I just am thinking of like the permissions of like, getting permission for someone to shadow their child for the day, that was the only other thing I was thinking of, like, if that would be.
They're all fingerprinted, they can come in as a volunteer.
I know, but shadowing.
We shadow our own child.
Seems to be a little different than just like spending time.
Shadow dog, you can have.
Shadow we got.
Yeah, each other's children, yeah, that's fine. Yeah.
That'd be great, actually, you can let me know.
Yeah, or even shadow a class, like I could see just becoming part of a class and, yeah.
There's always ways to become part of a class, you know, and even.
Yeah, classroom visit feels more.
Yeah. I'm gonna be a mystery reader.
Well, I was thinking mystery reader and a mystery reader could even be on Zoom, so, like a ten minutes, um, you know, I know it's hard to physically get out and come in, but could try to make it easier into a working schedule. Ten minute mystery reader Zoom call.
Yeah, kept it a volunteer, then that meets that and it could look differently for all of you.
Yeah, I like that, yeah, perfect.
So if it's a Zoom for Josh and the reading and Stefan and Allison, you can make it in for a day and
Yeah.
serve lunch at, you know, a holiday break, that's a treat here, so.
Oh, yeah, like at the Thanksgiving dinner, yeah, I got pictures of you in an apron.
You do, I would do it all over again, one of my favorite days of the year.
Yeah.
And one of the, yeah, someone will have to judge the robotics competition, then I get to judge this year, so.
Yeah, so there's opportunities, but still that engagement, okay. Is there anything you'd like to remove? You, you, I think you accomplished the board member orientation.
Thank you, I think we want to remove that one, yeah.
I mean, and Mrs. McCarthy is actually looking to do something different with Coder Z this year and have a live competition with the other SAU sixteen.
Oh, cool.
So Stratum has the robotic, uh, has the Coder Z grant and Brentwood as well, and last year it was all online.
Oh.
And they wanna do a live.
Very cool.
This year too.
I'm gonna share the three that I have with you right now.
Well, we, I mean, the first one, I think we all feel like is going well, cause we're talking about data and just getting a deeper understanding of what's going on, so I think.
Yeah, I think this has been helpful.
Oh, yeah, I would like to continue that, for sure.
The middle one we checked off and maybe we could replace that with the one that we just talked about.
Yeah.
And then board and community relationships.
I think we just continue that with the like community news and, yeah. And around the time of the budget hearing, I feel like we did a little bit more engage, well, you sent out something, which is really helpful, explains the whole.
Save the dates kind of thing.
Yeah, and explains the process and, yeah, so. I think those are, I think those, replacing that middle of what we just talked about, those three are good.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, sounds good.
Do we need a motion to approve?
If we make a motion to adopt it and second, and then that'd be great.
Make a motion to adopt the three uh, school board goals for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
I'll circuit.
All in favor?
Aye.
Agreed. Any people related matters? No, personnel?
Oh, I don't think anything has shifted since the last time, oh, yes, yes, yes it has, sorry, um, we had, we had received um, a letter of resignation from one of our para professionals, um, right when the school year started, um, and she worked twenty hours a week, so it was a part-time position, and we had filled that part-time twenty-hour position um, with the lovely Miss Wendy Lawler.
I was gonna say, let me guess, Miss Lawler. Awesome.
We have partially filled our openings.
Couldn't get away.
No, no. Yeah, I, it's, I'm finding more and more teachers that just aren't loving retirement and they just come back. Come back in roles that have different kinds of responsibilities, the fun stuff, working just with kids.
Okay.
So we're still working, we still do have openings, we still have para openings.
Okay.
And um, the permanent staff position has not been filled out, so we still do have some openings.
Chris, are you seeing that across?
Uh, different schools, um, for pairs, pairs are the ones that's the hardest, and that's, that's uh, New Hampshire, it's a national trend, you know, it's pairs and bus drivers, those are, those are the two biggest ones.
Mm-hmm, we had that today.
Yeah.
Yeah, tell me about it.
Yep, they did their best, I think the last kid got home at four forty-five, oh boy.
So again, we, we apologize, we understand that, we're trying to work through contracts, um, we at SLT have been brainstorming, what more can we do? Um, but it's just, we can't work through if they're not hired, um, so people have asked, can you re-look at the routes? Uh, can Astrid Staley not to keep, she looks at it all the time, how do we do it, so, it's frustrating.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
But we're in pretty good shape here.
Yeah, and we've.
Compared to others some of the other times.
Yeah, I mean, we, it would be great to fill the holes that we have, it's, um, you know, you definitely, we definitely feel short staff still, um, but.
Yeah.
And just, like with the busing, just asking parents to be patient, that, you know, there was a substitute driver that doesn't know the routes and doesn't know the kids and it just took a really long, and Asgood was closed apparently, which had lots of things.
I can't believe they didn't give you guys a heads up on that, that's crazy.
Well, you know, I had, Kristen had proactively reached out to the town and the police department and the bus company this morning asking, because it was put on her radar that this was a potential, and the response from all organizations was that it wouldn't be a problem, and then twenty minutes before dismissal, we got oh, it's closed, we can't get down, so we did attempt to be proactive in, in that, and it just didn't work, so lots of patience needed today with busing. So in case you hear anything, there was sort of a perfect storm of things happening with bus three today.
Oh, that's also bus three? I thought Ian got lost coming up the driveway this morning. Where is he? Um, okay, motion to adjourn? I can make a motion to adjourn at seven oh nine. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.